We call the November 4th regular board meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the November 4th meeting. Welcome to all of you who are with us this evening. And welcome to those who will be watching us on the live broadcast as well. Allow me to introduce the people at the table with me. From my right, we have Janelle Carter and Mike Miller. From my left, we have Corinne Hernandez, Shawn Heitman, and Ben Fletcher. To my right is Paulette McCall, the Board Secretary, and to my left is Dr. Thayer Shute, the Superintendent of Schools, and I am Nina Block. Do we have anyone signed out? And I think I can forego that.
No, since I'm down here.
Read with me the mission of the Markham County Community School District. We develop learners who have knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences. Stand at your A go and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yeah, we have three additions. One is the special board meeting that's from last Wednesday, October 30th. And we have one open enrollment request that we're recommending denial on for Juliette Fernandez. And we also have a recommendation for hire for Adam Saunders to become the next Communications Director for the district.
And do we have a deletion of 7:05?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving now to the next meeting.
We are, and it will be a 4:30 meeting before the regular five. So on the 18th, we'll do the superintendent's quarterly evaluation at 4:30. Dr. Shute will have documents prepared and get them to you before that meeting so that you'll have a chance to read them and look at them, and then we can move more quickly during that half hour or two to get that accomplished. Any questions? Question, Janelle? May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Miller Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries six zero.
Again, so for recognitions, as we do annually, we're recognizing our employees who have veteran status and ask Ben to read one excerpt from the National Proclamation.
The United States is a beacon of hope, freedom, and opportunity to people around the world. Soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, and coast guardsmen who fight to defend our liberty embody courage, patriotism, and loyalty. These patriots safeguard the values that keep our great nation strong. During National Veterans and Military Families Month, we honor and express our deep appreciation for these brave men and their families.
Many of our buildings have special ceremonies, if not on Veterans Day during that particular week. Since we didn't have a board meeting that week, we felt it best to do it now to acknowledge you until beforehand versus after the fact on the 16th. As a district administration, on behalf of the district, we go around on Veterans Day and personally thank each of these employees and provide them with a thank you card as
Looking at the consent agenda, are there any questions about the minutes of the 21st or the 20... Any items of note other than the ones you have given us in personnel?
There are.
Looking at interagency agreements and contracts, we have a post-site agreement for the course to College AmeriCorps and a data sharing agreement with the same. We have a contract amendment to the Personal Responsibility Education Program, amending to add $25,500 in funds. We have an MOE with Marshall County Juvenile Court Services to allow the sharing of information of students. And defined Learning Title Access Agreement for STEM Building License Renewals for Miller and Lenahan in the amount of $10,000. In open enrollments, we have two in, two out, and one denial. Are there any items of note in fields?
No.
I think it was three in, one out in the open enrollments.
You are correct.
That's another positive trend I wanted to call. It's a me celebration.
We will celebrate. Thank you. Looking at donations, we have a donation from Band Boosters in the amount of $5,489 for the band trip to Orlando. And we have a grant from Walmart Facility Number 581 in the amount of $2,000 towards junior achievement. Are there any questions on the financial report? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion.
Heitman, Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries six zero. And we're all ready for Fisher Elementary. If you would mark and Jennifer, if you'd come forward. They're all hot, so it doesn't matter. Please make sure that you use microphones for the recording.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to share what we have gone at Fisher Elementary. So we took the opportunity and created a video that kind of gives an overview of different things we have going on within our curriculum and different student aspects. And we wanted to highlight some of the, a lot of the new things that we have going on, including things that newly funded and supported through the board. So you'll see kind of a variety of curriculum and other student activities and things we have that are new. Anything to share?
Who can think of the positive action that we're going along with that? What's the positive action?
So we need to create a SMART goal, which we have to do now. For Ali, today's our SMART goal on the next flag item. You want to pull that up?
We'll set our PLC questions to three and four, and then we can also talk about within those MTSS groups how that can help.
Am I done? Just fill what I need to do now.
You need to make the box for Sam.
Yeah, because poor Sam, he's got some cars. So do I say?
Thirty-six is four times as much as nine. Since we took that first one together, I want you to try two, three, and four on your We pick the soccer ball with our feet. There's T for tennis ball.
Can you find the tennis ball?
There it is. Like with balls. Have you been learning about balls? Yes. Did everybody try with balls?
Hello, Janelle?
Is that what I planned?
And I want us to think about what are we trying to solve. So it says, "At the zoo, there are 137..."
At the zoo, there are 137 birds and 142 reptiles. Are there more birds or more reptiles at the zoo?
All right, 137. What am I trying to figure out? Yes, I'm trying to figure out which one is gray. So what's my important information? What information do I need to use to help resolve this? All right. What are this? I'm worried that we're going to be here. Sorry.
And anyone know what we call the place where two bodies come together? It's called a joint. You have lots of joints in your body.
The arrow landed right above Achilles' heel, the very spot that has not been digged into the river Styx. Achilles died from his wound. So now you know why Achilles died from his wound. So now you know why the Achilles tendon is named for his. This tendon was the one spot where the mighty warrior was vulnerable, and he picked up... Shawn?
Because he wanted him to have to drink from the pond and because of layers.
Oh my goodness, kiss your face. You have the best memory ever. Yes, hello, Bison, said Jumpy Mouse. Hi, I'm Jumpy Mouse. Hello, Jumpy Mouse.
Tell me how beautiful this sky looks today. And Bison said, "Tell me how beautiful this sky..." Why it's underlined because it's called a tricky word, remember? It doesn't make the sound that we learned for, um, oh, right? Ah. Owl. Owl. And you point to the owl in your mouth. And let's say over everybody. Owl. And let's go, right?
Snake. They don't like the straight land because of the...
Thank you. Because of the land earlier off. Fail with grace. That means like, if you fail with grace, it means you do it in a light way. Thinking for yourself that led to the greatest of all the Athenian gifts to the world, greater than the art, greater than the architecture, or the Olympic Games. It was the gift of democracy. Just like we did earlier, we had our magic e-berry jump up. Bison, no e there. Great. Ah. Ah. What letters spell that sound? Um, Nora? S-H. And what's S-H called? Two letters that make one sound? What's that? A diagram. Nice job. Get ready to touch and say, "Think you're going to read the first letter." Here we go. Ready, go. Ash. Ash. My word writing's up and down a bit of that. Map. Tap. Those are regulars. Map. Wrap. Maps is wrap. Those are regulars. What about map? Map. Benjamin. You know what letters spell that? Very good. It's tap and sweep. D. E. So now, I want you to come up here and find Tom's parents. Can you find Tom's parents? There they are. I want you to listen to this.
All right, so that kind of gives you an overview of some of the things we have going on at Fisher, and we'll see if you guys have any questions or want to know more about anything you saw or something you didn't see in there.
So I noticed a really great reading. That was one of the curriculums that we approved last year. So how is that going?
I think it's going great. Right now, we use that extensively within our title reading curriculum, and then some with our special ed, and then some during our MTSS time based on data to fill some of the needs for students. But it's been very positive in the fact that students have a lot of those routines. CKLA has a lot to offer in terms of building those skills, but they work pretty well in tandem, so we've been able to utilize both pretty well.
And to, I think this is my... To add to that as well, last fall in first grade, we had a lot of kids that struggled when they came in to segment words. And then we used that, obviously, like you said, in kindergarten last year. And all of our kids that were at Fisher with us in kindergarten that came into first, we only had four that couldn't segment compared to about 32 the year before. So we saw a difference there on that initial screen.
Great. And then TK, is that Fisher?
Yes. So we have, that's our half-day program currently. They jam pack a lot in their morning that they have to help prepare students, but they're getting settled with their routines. And I know Emily Banks has a lot going on in the day of different hats she wears, but it's all settling in pretty well and getting all that stuff settled in, so.
Yeah, and our kindergarten team, I think Grace, working with her really well as well in answering questions and leading her along, so that's been wonderful.
It's just at Fisher, right?
We don't often hear about the guidance program, but we did approve the new guidance curriculum last year. You highlighted that a little bit. Tell us a little bit more about that.
I think it's been very positive. I know that we're still learning about it and trying to see how all the lessons fit together and progress through the years. But I know that teachers have really appreciated the explicit instruction that goes along with that, and teachers are actually looking for more resources to help, you know, as they cycle through, we have guidance once a cycle, but they're looking for additional resources, which the curriculum does have. It's just a matter of trying to learn how to navigate and pull in extra pieces. So they're wanting to supplement and add to what they have to use that common language. So people are really enjoying having it, and they're kind of wanting more. So it's been very positive so far.
Our board saw a good example of that, teaching when we visited Frank Lloyd Wright's issue.
So and there's a lot of common themes that weave throughout the grade levels, so it will help build that common language once, you know, once we've had it a few years and as they go through the different grade levels. So overall, it's been very positive.
Early in the video, there was a lot of examples of the PLC at work, so maybe we'll talk a little bit about that and how you see that progressing at Fisher.
We had the opportunity to take another group of students this summer, or past summer, our teachers did. Teachers this past summer with some of our excellent, so we're really trying to build capacity in that area. As you can see from the video, we have weekly meetings because our teachers see the need for continually looking at that data. They're looking at those daily lesson checks and during those ones that are connected to our essential standards. And then we're regrouping continuously every couple of weeks based on those standards for our students that are not meeting those. And this year, as an instructional coach, having the opportunity to attend those meetings on a regular basis has been really positive and to see that we talk about the interdependent work with each other and that we can't do our jobs without each other. And I think that's very evident in our teams. And I sometimes am in awe of the information we know on our students and the data and the teachers that are just really collectively working together to make sure we get all the students what they need on those essential standards.
And to add to that, there's some common phrases we use quite often at Fisher. Collective inquiry, which we got from our PLC learning, really seeking out answers when we see someone, when we use that data and see, okay, this is working over here. We're really looking, how are you doing that? And what can I do to improve my practice? And then we also talk about collective efficacy, which really is the belief that what we're doing is going to make a difference. And through Hattie's work, there's a lot of talk about that in the PLC process. So we look through the PLC process, we've really been able to hone in on solutions versus, okay, here's the things we don't know how to do or we can't do. Instead of blaming or, you know, pointing the finger, we're looking at the data and saying, okay, how do we find the answer? What's the solution here? And what do we need to, you know, improve our practice? And then we hone in on those four PLC questions to help the students that are struggling, but then also help extend the students that are already proficient. So it's been very positive for us.
And our trend is, is that our students that need the extension are our larger groups. We have smaller pockets of kids that are struggling with the standard, so that's exciting.
Can you explain your attendance wall? Is that your daily attendance in the classroom or a break?
Sure. So the stars that are highlighted there, it's highlighting days of perfect attendance. So we're tracking the days. So the flag goes up if they have perfect attendance. I think Anson does something pretty similar. So when they have perfect attendance, we celebrate that within the classroom, and then we track that on the wall. And then at our assembly, we just had, you know, maybe a week or so ago, we highlighted the top classes and they got to choose pizza party or something. So and I would say, we started it last year halfway through, and, you know, our numbers were okay, but I would say the beginning of this year, we've already had more days of perfect attendance than probably many months last year. So I feel like it definitely helps to highlight and have that conversation of the importance of being at school and making sure everyone's here so we can learn together. So it's been pretty positive. And there are some other little things we do with that too, but that's kind of the idea of it.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
So first, we're going to talk about trunk or treat. It was another success this year. It was very cold out, but we still got over 600 kids, and a lot of the high school groups participated even though it was cold. For sports, there's a big volleyball game away at Cedar Falls tonight. For cross country, Phoebe Hermanson just got 14th at state, and she was the first all-state finisher in 11 years. And for swimming, there is the state meet this weekend.
So for seniors, what we're doing in homeroom is kind of like a senior preparation for college. So what we're doing is that the teacher during E and R, during homeroom, will speak to us about opportunities that have scholarships in the state of Iowa or national, talk about loans or anything that we have questions on. So if a student doesn't know how to get loans or how to repay them if they're going to take them out for college, the teacher goes step by step and starts explaining to the whole class about what they are and if we were going to take them out, what would happen. It is also understanding, we also understand what's going to happen during our senior year. So our senior year is actually really important and really busy for us, applying for colleges and universities. So getting that understanding of what scholarships and loans and grants are is really important for us. And also the All-State Music Festival will be held in Iowa State University, November 21st to the 23rd. Olivia Adams, Smolik, Amanda Hoffman, Deontay Dean, and Elijah Pason were all going to go, are going to go for the All-State Chorus. Rebecca Stone and Tristan Oberender are going for All-State Band, and Urien Campos-Padia and Colin Jensen are going for All-State Orchestra. And Halloween Grams, they're really popular without everyone at the high school. Everyone usually gets one, either for themselves or with some of their friends. The Health Careers Club made it for this year, and it usually fundraises for the yearly trip that they take to either a hospital or somewhere so they know, but since they know what they want to do as a career, they get more experience in that area.
That's it.
Did you enter out at trunk or treat?
Yeah.
Have you participated before, or is this your first year with trunk or treat?
I did since I was... This was my first time.
So what'd you think for your first year?
It was cold. I brought a blanket.
In spite of the cold.
I thought it was really fun seeing all the kids dressing up and asking for candy. It was really nice to see the community.
I had a really good turnout. So Halloween gram, what is that? I mean, is it, is it like a card, or is it somebody singing, or is it somebody dressing up?
So for the Halloween grams, it's usually just a card. Either the people in the group draw it themselves and send them out with like a little piece of candy. And people, a lot of people actually get it, and a lot of groups want to do the Halloween grams because a lot of kids actually purchase them.
Okay, so this year was the Health Careers Club. So then they get money for making a card and then sending it out. Great. Yeah, cool.
Do you know where the Health Careers Club is looking to take a trip to this year?
Thank you very much, please.
Central Rivers AA has a board election coming up, and there is one person on the Central Rivers AEA has a reelection coming up, and there is one person on the ballot to represent our area, and it just happens to be a Marshalltown resident, Mary Stevens. Mary Stevens was a longtime employee with the AEA, is recently retired, and, oh, she was held in high regard in terms of her service on behalf of Marshalltown, serving Marshalltown through that role for many, many years, so I would recommend the board approve checking that ballot for her name and submit it to the appropriate people.
Any questions about the candidate or the process? May I have a motion to cast a ballot for Dr. Mary Stevens for the Director, District Five, Central Rivers AEA?
Move for rule.
Miller Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries six zero.
We have a agreement with FEH for purposes of moving forward towards more complete designs, and as you know, we have them produce some preliminary cost estimates and preliminary designs for our MHS tennis complex in conjunction with long-range strategic planning work for the athletic facilities that we have them do. This is their proposed contract, which is essentially the same type of contract that we have for Roundhouse Phase Two. Their fees will be 7.5%, which is comparable to what we have for Roundhouse Phase Two as well. Unfortunately, despite the recent setback with the city's vote not to partner with us on this project, that doesn't change the conditions of the courts and the need to move forward in terms of replacing them. And so the intent would be to ask you to approve FEH to finalize to the extent necessary to go out to bid hopefully by late February, which is a prime bidding season for these types of projects, with the intent that whether we're partnered or not, that we can move forward on this project starting in probably late April when the weather is appropriate. What our intent would be, would be to start on the new portions of the facility while still maintaining the existing facility to get through the spring season and then to have the work continue through the summer into the fall for the fall project to be completed before obviously winter, but I'm guessing it would be probably September, October.
Questions for Dr. Shu.
So, I think what you said makes sense that if it probably was necessary before, I think it's necessary. I think when you first presented this, you mentioned that they would have alternates, not lighting. Is there any more need to, to any other alternates if, if the city isn't involved? Is there, is there other ways that maybe we can just have different scales of it?
Yeah, I think there will be a number of things that will be listed as alternates. So for example, we absolutely, whether we do the lights or not, want to put the lighting infrastructure in because best time to do that was when you're building the courts versus having to dig up afterwards. So we would have that be part of a base bid, but actually putting light holes up, putting the lights up would be an alternate. We will definitely have the parking off of Second Avenue be an alternate. That's highly desired just because of its leading access to what will, I think, become the front entrance really of that facility, but it also provides ADEA access, which doesn't currently exist there. The pickleball courts could be, the three pickleball courts could be an alternate to the project as well. We're hoping that, and as I've been talking quite a bit with Paul, that we believe that if need be, we would be, there would be different options that the board considered for funding it. So the alternates, I think first and foremost would be for the purpose of hoping that the bids come in as the preliminary cost estimates and we've taken into account inflation as well, that they come in, in line, and if they don't, if they're over what we're estimating, then obviously we'd have to make some decisions. But the other part of that equation too will be whether, you know, how much of the district is able to pay for, versus if we are successful in getting a ring-up application this December, plus whether or not the city might reconsider their partnership over the last 45 years and force it to continue with that. We haven't finalized all of that with the alternates, but I anticipate there being a lot of different alternate parts to provide us the best options to either do it or at least be positioned so that if we do need to reduce some aspects of it, we can come back to these in the future.
I think that I'm in favor of moving forward with these plans, so, I mean, I'll vote yes on this tonight. One of the things that you said early on in this process is that, you know, we have a lot of needs. A tennis, new tennis courts may not be at the top of the list of those needs, but for the fact that we might get the city and Martha Ellentai to pay a large part portion, it raises it close to the top of the list. I think I paraphrase what you said, but I think that's about right, and I, and I agree with that. And so absent either Martha Ellentai or the city's participation, I think it falls back down the list of not being the number one thing anymore. And so I appreciate moving forward with this portion of the expenditure and the planning. I'm not sure, I think I agree with you first time that it's at the top of the list because there'd be some partners. And I'm hopeful that tomorrow's election changes some of the thinking on the city council about this project amongst some other ones as well, and that we can go back to where we were on this.
And I think, and you know as well as anyone, Mike, having had a child recently participate in this, you know, I think we can continue for another year, maybe to, to patchwork the problems that exist, to at least try to best ensure that it's a safe environment for our kids to compete on, but already two or three of the courts are not suitable for high competitive play, so we're, we're already kind of out of the equation of hosting the conference tournament or hosting a district tournament in order to qualify for state just due to the fact of the courts being in a bad condition that they're in, which is unfortunate because our student athletes and now our community, since we don't really have courts anywhere else in the community, really deserves a, a safe and, and appropriate playing surface, recreational surface that we can all be proud of. But I would agree with you that, to me, it seems like a no brainer to do a project for a third or half the cost of what it otherwise would cost you, and I'm still hopeful that, that we can have success in one or both of those arenas with establishing partnerships so that it can truly be a, a community asset.
I guess I would just add that if we don't get those partners on board, then probably make sure that the scope of the project is for the purpose of the school district and the community's not want more than we can add features or parts to it that, that aren't for the benefits of the third.
Further questions? May I have a motion to approve the contract for architectural services of FEH designed in the amount of 157,600 for the Marshalltown Tennis Complex?
Sue.
Second.
Fletcher Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries six zero.
So board policies in terms of first reading, we have two policies, 900 guiding principles and objectives for community relations, and 902.1 news media relations. These Sean presented for review at the last meeting, there have been no additional changes, so I would recommend approving and waiving the second reading elements. So Luke.
Aitman Miller, all in favor of adopting, amending, sorry, amending 900 and 902.1, which was 607.3 or is now?
Is now.
Is now. Are you sure?
It wasn't out of tune. Yes, 902.1 should change to 607.3.
Approving 900 and 607.3 as amended. And waive the second reading. Motion has been made by Aitman, seconded by Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries six zero. Okay, Mike?
Okay, I have three policies for initial review this time. First one is 902.3. Couple of changes. One is changing the title to news releases, has to do with releasing news to the media generally. I think, Farin, you asked to add this sentence that you have highlighted in yellow to be consistent with IASB. And so probably that has to come back, I guess, again, although it doesn't really change the meaning of anything very much.
Any questions for Mike at this time? 902.3 will come back.
902.4 is under the same category, releases to news media about board matters. You can see the very small changes to make it consistent with IASB. Probably needs to come back, but again, it really doesn't change the meaning of this very much.
It does, thank you. 902.5?
This one is unchanged, titled duplicated or, duplicated or printed materials. Recommend it is to be marked as reviewed.
Any questions for Mike on any of those policies? 902, three, and four will come back, and 902.5 is marked as reviewed.
We have one additional policy, 606.3, which for the most part is mirrored after an IASB policy on personal animals in the school. We reviewed this also with Stacy Tool Crawford from a health and wellness standpoint, had her massage some of the language just to make sure that in the event that animals do come to the school, like for show and tell or other things, that we've taken necessary precautions to make sure we're not compromising health and wellness of people if they have allergies and other things, and this does occur every now and then. And so I just felt it necessary to ask board to adopt this policy, so we have some guidelines in that regard. This does not provide guidance for more formalized arrangements with animals, whether they be service animals, which usually federal law helps us with that, or therapy dogs, which a number of schools and/or districts have started adopted programs for SEL purposes with that in the event that the opportunity would come before us to consider that, that there'd be other guidelines or regulations and policies that we've put in place for those.
Is it our intent to develop those policies proactively or wait until we have the situation?
That's yet to be determined. We're, we're talking about it right now. I have access to policies and regulations that I helped craft relative to therapy dogs, so we have some good resources for that. And just, we don't really, there, there's not been reason to really go down that road in terms of someone approaching us about, about that issue yet, other than someone coming in on a volunteer basis that had their own therapy dog.
I personally, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I personally would think that we would rather meet this proactively than waiting for the situation and then appear as if now that you've asked, we're being arbitrary and this is our policy. How do the rest of you feel?
Agreed. I think that, just in light of the fact that I talked about this a little bit, you see it on planes and.
Can't hear you.
Use of service dogs of different types is becoming more and more common, and just making sure that we're addressing the issues with service animals in general.
Yeah, and we, we do have a service animal that's currently in place at one of our buildings, and again, a lot of that is guidances by federal law in terms of allowing and working through that. We can definitely do some reviews to see if there's some model regulations on service animals and pursue that. Therapy dogs are kind of a different bill usually. That's something that the schooling or district embarks on. There's extensive costs, very similar probably to service animals in terms of training, and you want to make sure that it's a high-quality training and just the training in general with that. There's some liability involved in that as well, but, you know, bases have to be covered on, and there's extensive cost in training for the dog, for continued dating and training the dogs, decisions on ownership of the dog, usually the employee owns the dog. Access to the dog, you know, there's certain positions that provide equitable access throughout a building, and there's other positions that have pretty limited access, and those are things that have to be considered too, but we can certainly first take a look at the service dog situation to see if there's something that we need to get in place for that.
Other comments? Moving on to communications, anything to note?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll have that covered by the next one.
Yeah, maybe. Looking at reminders, we have initial review of three policies by Karina. The Equity Committee will be held on November 7th, no?
Nora, it's not this week's, she's had to postpone it till she gets back from.
So it's when?
19.
Okay. We have a curricular visit coming up?
Monday.
Veterans Day.
At 8:30 at Anson. I hope you're invited. I hope you've been invited, yeah.
We have an N B A meeting on Tuesday, November 12th in the team room. The next meeting, we will have Marshalltown Burning Academy as our building showcase. Looking at committee reports, MBEA did not meet on the 22nd of October, did it?
No, that got moved.
How about something from internal communications?
Yeah, we had a good discussion on Friday. Again, a couple of the topics that we talked about were the lack of substitutes, but we also coupled that with the number of absences that we're experiencing from staff and employees, and particularly those that require substitutes. So we had, I thought, really good discussion around that whole topic. We talked about, and we've had this discussion on prior occasions too, where a lot of focus is nationally as well as state and locally going on social emotional learning for students and needing not to forget about the social emotional state of teachers as well, which could be feeding into in some ways absences and that sort of thing. So we've had some discussions with the AEA relative to that as well about trying to figure out how we can weave in some things for staff that help support them as well. Trying to think other topics to note, Lisa. Trying to think other topics to note, Lisa.
I think there were a few things about the handbook and some HR issues with Nora's work. Talking about those next week.
Sayak?
I'm only now just realizing I have Nora's aside, so I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I totally must miss that. So I have nothing.
Karina was there. Well, let me refresh your memory.
Refresh my memory.
Yep, we had, I think, about fifteen or sixteen people that came. And we continued to work through the portrait of a graduate work as far as our life-ready skills. So we're trying to add to the college and career readiness conversation by talking about skills or traits or behaviors that kids would exhibit to show that they're life-ready on graduation. So we made charts and did dots and bullets, and we came up with eight, I think, finalists. And so the committee's work, as there are certain people in the committee that are, that are going to go out and vet those lists with different groups or organizations throughout the school district and community over the next month or so, and then hopefully narrow that down to four, I think it was, three or four things that then the group can work on defining and making that more clear as to what a student would need to know and do to show that. For example, one of the skills is communication. So like what communication skills does a student need to have to be life-ready? And then our goal is to back map that to be high school-ready, et cetera, similar to what Dr. Shu is doing with Bobcat Ready. Yeah, we meet again in December, I believe, right?
What have we done tonight to improve the education for the students in the district?
It's always fun to see the presentations and talk about the money that we spent and what it's doing.
And what it's doing, absolutely. We're moving ahead with tennis court improvement. Any items for future agendas? You have one more task, because after I'm done with this quote, you have a task to do. I'll tell you after the quote what it is that you have to do.
Board members?
Everybody. Everybody in the room.
Here we go.
Here we go. The quote comes from Oprah Winfrey, and she says, "The more thankful I became, the more my bounty increased." That's because for sure what you focus on expands. When you focus on the goodness in your life, you create more of it. I'll give you a few minutes to think, because you're going to list, and you can't repeat, so you might want to be first, the good things that are happening in the district.
Well, I guess on the topic of what you focus on expands, we've got preschool and the summer program. I'm very happy that those have been expanding the last several years. But quite key focus on that area.
So this is sort of smaller than that, but I went to the musical over the weekend, which was a really great show. And I think that segues into all of the fine arts programming within the district. It's a really outstanding thing.
I think we're, over the years, we've been expanding our communication of our district's success. With Andrew, and hopefully, and we can pick that up and we can expand it more.
I think that following that note, I think that the image of our district has become much better across the state and within the community because of those efforts.
Here's something that's a little, a little different, and I'd like to hear more about it at a few board meetings. Eric Goslin's Sea Cadets program that he runs for kids who are interested in the military career is, from everything I've learned, really great, and I think we ought to shine a light on a little bit more here at the board table.
I think, I mean, there's a hundred different things I could mention, but I think just the general sense that there's a real positive vibe in the center to be going with the whole Bobcat Project, particularly within the student body, that didn't seem to be as prevalent. Maybe when I came, you know, kids had verbalized to me that were part of the interview process that, you know, they maybe weren't so proud, you know, whether it was due to win losses or what. And I just really think that, I've been really proud about all of our student activities. Like Sean, I went to the musical on Saturday night, and honestly, it was one of the best ones I've seen in thirty-five years from a high school department, whether it was the singers or the orchestra or the dramatics. I mean, all combined, it just really was a great performance, I thought. And really exemplified, you know, how, how great our kids can be to get individually and collectively both.
Go last.
I think a really good thing is that our MVP program is really lessening the violence in the high school.
Well, during the year, at least, I have the opportunity to have MCC classes at high school, and it's something that almost everyone does, and it's really fun to do because we sit right in our high school classes.
I think I'm going to talk a little bit about the ELA alignment for seven twelve, looking at standards and what our students need to know going through seven twelve ELA. That work that we're doing with the Literacy Center at the University of Iowa is just, it's important and it's necessary that we do it.
I think as still a relatively newcomer to the community, the focus of the community itself in support of the school district, the businesses that financially support different programs, JA and modular tech, it is so impressive to me what the community does to support the school district.
I would say too, just kind of what happened on Monday when we had professional learning, we had, afterwards when we read the evaluation results, like I think it sinks in that we just planned a day that like four hundred and nineteen teachers benefited from, and twenty-nine secretaries, and nineteen administrators, and a hundred and forty-two paras. And when you sit and think about the amount of coordination and planning that goes into getting great spaces for them to learn and be in all day, and, and job embedded learning, so it's not like a one-size-fits-all type of answer. It just makes me really proud because our principals contribute to that, our TLC people do too. But then, most importantly, kind of what Joe was saying, the teachers are all in when they're there, and they give us positive feedback, and the stuff they say that isn't positive, we listen to and we try to make it better for the next time. So, you know, we're currently working on planning for January. And the nice, the other nice thing about that is, I mean, I, before coming to Marshalltown, I didn't know anything about Marshalltown, to be honest, other than I had some travel experiences with Marshalltown administrators. But I had, everyone wants to help Marshalltown. It's just a really cool thing. Like they, like Iowa State wants to partner with us, like we're just such a great microcosm of the world, like sitting right here in central Iowa, that, you know, it's our job to, you know, have open ears and open arms to it. But people want to help us, they want to help our kids, they want to give us resources and grants and everything else that's out there. So it's just, it's kind of a great feeling to know that if we have a problem, there's a solution that's waiting for us. And the board helps us by making us have those opportunities too.
I don't usually talk at meetings.
Now's your turn.
Hey, me. Well, being new to town and having two children, one in elementary and one in middle school, I really appreciate that the district provides lunches and breakfasts for elementary kids. That is awesome. And, and you don't participate in, in any of the lunch gaming that you hear about in other, other newspapers. And I can tell you, after the, the article I wrote about a week and a half ago, a lot of other people in the community appreciate it too.
Well, I didn't think that anybody would probably have one that I do, so I thought I'd wait, not steal anybody's thunder. The one thing that in just the years that I've been on the board, that I have seen grow and improve is the fact that Marshalltown has now become a district that is proactive rather than knee-jerk reaction. Our district before the last five years, or apart and whatever with this board in particular, used to be waiting until a situation occurred and having a knee-jerk reaction to it. And then the reaction was done very quickly, oftentimes without serious thought or enough thought, and bad decisions were made. Now we are a proactive district, and looking at this board saying, let's be proactive about service animals and therapy animals, et cetera, is just an opportunity for us to again be proactive rather than reactive. Thank you all very much for your participation in focusing on good things that are happening in our district. May I have a motion for adjournment? Fletcher Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. We are adjourned, thank you. Or thirty-one to eighteen.